The March 18th, 2021 Special Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away all cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for recess. Also tonight, when you're making a motion or a second, please state your name, then the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Viallak?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor, with council members Rousa, Johnson, Brown, and Harvey participating in person. Councilmember Viallak is telephonic, and I do also expect Councilmember Bernie, very shortly, telephonic.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Harvey, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Has joined. Thank you.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. The next on the agenda is persons to be heard. And we have no one at this time, so moving on. Madam Clerk, please read tonight's item of new business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's new business item 6.1, Community Policing in the 21st Century: Understanding the City of Wasilla's Public Safety Model. We'll need a motion to enter of the committee of the whole. Action may be taken outside a committee of the whole. And within this evening's PowerPoint presentation, we'll talk about application of force, policies and procedures, retention and recruitment, public safety tools and resources, but not necessarily in that order.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into a committee of the whole?
Jim Johnson, I move to enter committee of a whole.
Is there a second?
Councilman Harvey, a second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Harvey, to enter into the committee of the whole. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is to provide council and the public an in-depth introduction to the Wasilla Police Department, our programs, our procedures, and our plans for the future. The Chief and I see this as an opportunity to help council really understand how the WPD operates, so each of you has the tools you need to keep your constituents updated and informed. While this special meeting is just intended to provide council with an introduction to the department, the Chief and I are working on developing programs and information sessions to keep council members, local businesses, local nonprofit groups, and Wasilla residents more engaged with the department in the future. As soon as we have more information on that front, I will provide council with an update. Our Chief, Joel Smith, will be giving the presentation tonight, along with city attorneys Aaron Spurbeck. And Mr. Spurbeck will be giving us all a premiere on the use of force continuum used by WPD to help us all understand the challenges our officers face on the job. Chief Smith, would you like to begin?
So, Madam Mayor, good evening. All right. Good evening, and City Council, good evening. Appreciate your attendance here this evening and giving us the opportunity to kind of give you an overview of what we do at Wasilla PD and how we do it at Wasilla PD. Tonight's presentation is going to be an overview and just kind of hitting on several of the different topics that we have. So just to kind of give us a roadmap of where we're going, kind of have it divided into four different sections: getting to know the PD, talking a little bit about recruitment, training, policies, and procedures; introduction to use of force; and then kind of where we plan on going here in the future. So looking at Wasilla PD, Wasilla PD started in 1993 and started with eight officers. We've now grown to 28 commissioned officers, plus a chief in 2021. We serve over 8,000 residents, but I think, as we all know, 8,000 is population of residents. We have a lot more than 8,000 people that come through the city on any given day, by a lot. And in fact, I think I brought this up to council before, but Wasilla PD handles anywhere between 28,000 and 29,000 incidences every year. And those incidences can range anywhere from a traffic stop to a call for service or public presentation, anything along those lines. So we're a pretty busy department now, especially compared to where the department was in 1993. So a little bit about myself. I grew up in Minnesota and came to Alaska in 1996, or came to Alaska in 1996. Got started with Palmer Police Department. Prior to that, I was actually a social worker, kind of a unlikely start to law enforcement. But interestingly enough, we've got other folks that have that same background at Wasilla Police Department. I actually worked in residential treatment, as well as suicide hotlines, prior to getting into law enforcement itself, and which has actually served to help me in law enforcement coming up through the years. But anyway, started with Palmer PD as a reserve and then became a dispatcher, then became a police officer in 1997. In 2000, I started with Wasilla Police Department and have been here ever since. And served in a lot of different capacities with the Police Department as well. Another person that I introduced, and she's in the back of the room here, is Lieutenant Ruth Johnston. She's been with the department a long time as well. And she started her time down in Texas, got a degree in teaching, and actually was a teacher before becoming a police officer. And we've got a couple of those in the Police Department as well. Moved to Wasilla in 1981 and got into firefighting, was a firefighter and rescue tech and EMT with the Matsui, and then became a state trooper in 1993. She was assigned to Palmer Post and where she served as a regular road trooper and also volunteered for a community-based assignment such as Neighborhood Watch and Crime Stoppers. She did become a certified domestic violence instructor for the state of Alaska and worked major crimes in Anchorage Headquarters, and was a statewide coordinator for the sex crimes investigators' monthly meetings, as well as the Child Fatality and Mortality Review Board. Was also on the AST dive unit. Joined Wasilla PD in '02 and started up the first multi-jurisdictional child abuse investigation unit in the state, along with Trooper Margie Escobar. And has received a couple of awards while doing that: the Governor's Light of Hope Award and also Children's Place Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. She was promoted to lieutenant in 2013, where she took over as supervisor for MatCom Dispatch, and then in 2018 moved over to patrol side of the house. One thing I want to say, we talked about my background a little bit, talked about lieutenant's background a little bit, but the Police Department is full of people that have a bio, just like we do, and had lives before law enforcement, just like myself and Lieutenant Johnston did. And we're made up of a group of individuals who work well together and really make Wasilla Police Department what it is today. We've got, as I mentioned before, other social service workers, we've got other teachers, we've got business owners. We have contractors, airplane mechanics, dispatchers, attorney that serve at Wasilla Police Department either as an officer or a civilian role. And that all comes together to make Wasilla PD what it is today. So just because we've got my bio up here and Lieutenant Johnston's bio up here, just encourage you to remember that we're made up of a pretty diverse group of folks. So looking at Wasilla PD and our community policing model, what is community policing? Well, community policing really is a combination of partnership and collaboration, and it's between the Police Department, its officers, and the community that the department serves. And they include a lot of things like the government, public entities, including the school district, community members and groups, private businesses, the media, nonprofit organizations, and service providers. And it's that partnership that forms that public trust. Some of the things that we have community partnerships with include our school resource officers with the Matsui School District, our community-funded K-9 program, the youth court, community outreach efforts. And those are just to name a few. But to look at some of these, what does a school resource officer do? Well, we've got school resource officers in Wasilla and Colony and Houston schools. They do supplement patrol while they're on school breaks. But what's good about the school resource, interesting about the school resource officer, I think a lot of people think, well, they're there for the protection. Yes, they're there for the perfection, protection of the school, but they're also there to interact with the students. They teach classes. They become role models for those kids. You hear stories about our SRO, they had an SRO at one of the schools that brought a ping pong paddle and found a ping pong table at the school and started playing ping pong with the kids. Well, I think we can all remember back to being in school, junior high, high school. May not have been the favorite time of your life, right? Clicks and bullying and things like that. The school resource officer was able to break down those bonds, those borders, by playing ping pong with the kids. We've also had kids that have been victims of some pretty horrific crimes that didn't want to report that, except for the fact that they had a relationship with that school resource officer. And that officer that they trusted and were able to speak with that officer and be able to get the help that they needed. Arcaito, yes?
Chief, I have a quick question. On your school resource officers, are these positions that are fairly full-time and consistent, or are they just sort of assigned as ad hoc? If you could talk a little bit more about how those positions are staffed, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So it's pretty important that you have the right person in that job. And we work hard to do that. So what we do is we look for an officer that's willing to have some sort of a commitment to the program. So the ideal is not to have somebody there one week and somebody else there the next week, or even halfway through the year. There have been times where we've had to do that just to help supply, to help meet that obligation, but that's not the idea. We look for somebody that's going to be able to be there for a few years, because we're going to invest in that officer. School district's going to invest in that officer, because they actually pay for the bulk of that officer's time. But they'll go through a certification process at the beginning of that and work with the other school resource officers kind of as a mentoring, and they'll go through continuing education as they're working in that role, both specifically addressing the school resource officer aspect, but also the school district provides quite a bit of training.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rousa? Just had a question along those lines about the school resource officer program as well. Is this a good, is this a good time, or would you rather we let you conclude your presentation?
If you've got a question, it would be fine.
Okay. So I understand Investigator Bennett, he was assigned to a school, was he one of those school resource officers?
He was, he was the temporary school resource officer, yes.
Temporary, okay. I just want to hear what you had to say about our city, you know, our police department's resources when it comes to allocating somebody like, and I don't know his first name, I'm sorry, but Investigator Bennett's time in particular, he's, I think at our last meeting when we discussed these things, you told us he was our only investigator. He's also in charge of the reserve program, which is pretty much at a standstill, and he's at a school. And now, I don't want to diminish the importance of that program, as you said, it's very important. And I think that it's a very good community outreach thing. Our children are, there's no better investment. But I wonder, does the city really have the resources, or does the city need more resources to properly fill and serve those roles?
Councilmember Rousa, that's a great question. And I guess I'll try to answer it as best I can, but also want to keep on focus here with the program. Investigator Bennett is our only investigator, but we only have a one investigator position. That does not mean he's the only one doing investigations. We also have an investigative sergeant and an acting investigator. Those are job classifications. At the time that he was doing the school resource officer program, I was the investigative sergeant, so there was somebody there doing investigations. But yes, Investigator Bennett was the only one who was classified as investigator, but not the only one doing investigations.
Thank you. And just to give you a little background about where I'm coming from here, I'm really trying to figure out where we can be doing better and where we can advocate as a city council to improve the resources that you have as chief of police to properly serve our community as it grows and expands at a rapid rate. So I'm with you all the way. I just want you to understand that for sure. But if there are gaps, that's what I'd like to know about, because we need to advocate here at the council to fill those gaps and to patch those holes and make sure that we're not bleeding.
Yep. And I think that's a good discussion to have. But for tonight's purposes, trying to keep on program here. We also have, the community was very involved with our K-9 program. Our current K-9 was funded completely through donations and raised $50,000. And in fact, the total cost, the total budget for the K-9 is still coming out of that money. So that's been a very successful, very successful program for us. Youth Court's another one. Youth Court provides an alternative forum for first-time juvenile offenders that are low-level through a peer-to-peer program. It's a state-sanctioned court program where those first-time offenders are serviced by student court personnel. They do have oversight with, through the court and through district attorneys and Department of Law and our youth court coordinator. So there's two parts to that program. There's the students that are going through it as a juvenile offender, but then you also have the students that are kind of proctoring it under the tutelage of the court staff. It's a very successful program, very low repeat offenders for those first-time offenders, and something that has been partnered with Wasilla PD for a lot of years. I can't remember when it first started with Wasilla PD, but it's been around for
A long time.
For a long time. And something that's always been very, very successful. And we do have several multi-agency relationships. Sexual Assault Response Team, dealing with adult sexual assault victims, collaboration between advocates, forensic nurses, and the hospital. Crimes Against Children Multi-disciplinary Team, again, a collaboration between folks at the Children's Place, which are forensic nurses and forensic interviewers and advocates. DEA Opiate Task Force, Drug Endangered Children's Task Force. And I'd be redigged if I didn't include the Alaska State Troopers and the Palmer Police Department as folks that we have multi-agency relationships with, because out here in the valley, it truly is a collaborative effort to keep our communities safe. Then we have several community outreach programs. We've had officers that officers are involved in, and we have a pretty, pretty long list, and these are just recent ones: dodgeball tournaments, chutes and ladders basketball tournaments, trunk-or-treat involvement, No Shave November to raise money and awareness for cancer, Santa Cop and Heroes, Matsui Drug, or Matsui DEA Drug Takeback Days, community car washes that are hosted at the Police Department, Eagle Scout Project sponsor, homeschool program, education sessions, as well as visits to schools, daycare facilities, for community helper days. And these are just ones that come up. We also have outreach, we have organizations and businesses that will contact us and ask for somebody to come out and present to them, or either through public speaking or provide a class or some sort of educational component, and we will do that as well.
Chief?
Yes?
Before you leave, community services, the programs you describe as outstanding programs, but they all in some way or form relate back to doing police work. What is your policies, what is your programs that you do to interact with the community? As you know, Wasilla, over the last 10 years, has become a changing community with a lot of different groups here now compared to 10 years ago. So what are you doing to reach out to the Native community, the African-American community, the Hispanic community, to build that? Because as you know, some communities where they come from, police and citizens don't talk and don't cooperate. So how are you building that trust and convincing them that this is a different atmosphere they're in now?
And that's something that we'll touch on at the end of the presentation. One of the things that the mayor and I have been in discussions about is how we can do that. And part of that is going to be part of a strategic plan that we're putting together to make sure that we're reaching out to the various stakeholders in the community.
Okay. I'll wait to the end. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, before I move on, is there any other questions that council might have so far? All right. So we'll kind of get into the next section here: standards, recruitment, training, accountability. One thing I'll point out here is the picture. This is, at the time, one of our SRO, Shaveland, and our chaplain, Dave Eller. SRO Officer Shaveland is now Sergeant Shaveland, who's our night shift sergeant, who's actually on duty tonight. But they went through the Matsui Crisis Intervention Team training together, and along with, I think there was a couple other dispatchers that may have been in their class, but there's been, over the years, I can't say that all of the officers at Wasilla PD have had mental health training, whether it's the CIT or mental health first aid, but it's most of the officers that have had that. And in fact, Officer Shaveland, or Sergeant Shaveland now, is a, well, he was, I think he just came out of certification, but he was an instructor in mental health first aid as well. And that's been, that's been kind of a proud point. In fact, I was talking to Sergeant Shaveland tonight, and he was talking that there, for a while, Wasilla PD may have had more folks trained through the 40-hour CIT program than AST or Palmer PD at one point in time, because our dispatchers go through that as well. Because who's the first person to have contact with somebody when they're in crisis? And that's the dispatch center. That's not so much the case anymore, because AST has really stepped up on that. In fact, we rely on them a lot for providing that, those training and those resources. But here not too long ago, AST sponsored a class in Wasilla, they needed space for it, and so the city of Wasilla provided that space at the sports complex, and we had a couple officers that went through the 40-hour class and that as well. Let's talk about recruitment and selection. I kind of like this picture. This is some of the original hires for Wasilla PD. You can probably tell because of the haircuts. But that was, that was quite a while ago. The chief on the left and some of the officers coming in there. So what does our application process or recruiting process look like? First of all, folks have to meet the established requirements by the Alaska Police Standards Council. And Police Standards Council updates their requirements occasionally, but it's a pretty lengthy, pretty lengthy list of items that you have to be able to pass through on your background to be able to be certified as a police officer in the state of Alaska. And then the city of Wasilla and Wasilla PD have some additional requirements that go on that as well. But you have to be able to pass a rigorous screening and background investigation process that includes interviews, testing, polygraph, medical, and psychological screenings. Kind of our ideal person is going to be courageous and respectful and humble, self-motivated, demonstrate freedom from racial and ethnic and racial, sexual bias, religious bias. Once somebody gets through that and they're selected and they're offered a job, then they have to be trained. For the most part, we use the DPS Academy down in Sitka. And I believe this is a picture of the recruits all lined up on day one, shortly after they've gotten off the airplane. But that process is a pretty extensive process. State Trooper Academy is 16 weeks. We did recently use the Anchorage Police Department's Academy, and I believe that was 21 or 22 weeks. So it's a pretty, pretty extensive process to just get through that initial training. And during that initial training, they're going to have topics that are state law, domestic violence. Obviously, their firearms and defensive tactics. They'll get their mental health training, first aid training, as well as resources that they need to be successful on the job. But the idea of the academy is just to get everybody up to a basic operating knowledge and level. Following that, they've got 16, a minimum of 16 weeks of on-the-job training that we call the field training program. And during that program, it's pretty arduous and pretty stressful for a person to go through. It's divided into several different phases. And the first three phases, they're with different, they're with a different trainer, certified trainer for a month. And then at the tail end, they go to a two-week final evaluation where they have to demonstrate that they're proficient in their skills. Every day, they're graded on over 30 items, from how they dress, to how they interact with others, how they conduct their investigations, how they drive. I can tell you that I have never been in any other job where the orientation period was that strenuous in everything, right down to, are your boots shine? Is there lint on your, on your uniform? And, you know, can you interact with people? Can you talk with people? Can you interact with your coworkers? Can you conduct a traffic stop? And you're graded on those every, every single day. At the tail end of the day, that evaluation is gone over with the new officer. And if there's training deficiencies, there's a specific plan that's put together on how to overcome those training deficiencies. And in fact, we may even put the person into an extension, just working on a specific issue if it needs to happen that way.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes?
Is that an ideal, or does that actually happen? And I guess I don't want that to sound wrong. I'm just wondering, is that the program that's intended to be in place, or does that actually happen every, every day with those new recruits, as you said?
Typically, both, yes. That's the ideal, but that's the way that it usually happens as well. Certainly, you know, we're a public safety agency, and sometimes you can't predict when the emergency is going to happen. So there certainly potentially could be a day where that doesn't happen at the end of the day, but that's, yes, that's the ideal, and that's, we work hard to make that happen.
Thank you. I have one more question, and it's about the APD training. So I heard from a, I was just discussing this public safety topic with a member of the public, and heard some harsh words from them when I mentioned, you know, that the training budget is pretty healthy at the city of Wasilla. That's something I was told by staff, and I don't have any reason not to believe that, you know. They're surprised because, from what they knew, Wasilla police officers were being trained free of charge at APD, and that it was a, it was a cost thing. Is it a cost thing that they're not going to Sitka? Or is it a choice, just a choice thing? Is it a scheduling thing? And where would that, where would that criticism come from? Can you debunk that?
So we've had two people... So we've had two people, I'm going to say probably easily in the last 15 years, that have gone to APD Academy. Everybody else has gone through the State Trooper Academy. The time that we had those two officers go through it's because we hired five new officers at the same time, and the Trooper Academy could only accept three. We needed someplace to send the other two. It is true that APD does not charge us a fee per se to attend their academy. However, they do expect that our officers or our recruits that go through their academy will help supply, provide supplies for the academy. And in addition, we're also paying overtime for travel and things like that. The reality was, when it came down to dollars and cents, we paid more to send our officers through APD's academy than to Sitka.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So moving on here, talking about training. So officers go through their initial training at the academy, then they go through their field training, where they learn how to practically apply those, those skills. And then we've got ongoing training. For example, I went through the academy in 1997. If I hadn't had any other training since 1997, that would probably be pretty bad. So we, we, we do continual, ongoing training with the officers. Now, some of our training that we have actually is mandated by policy. For example, defensive tactics and less lethal munitions, such as beanbag, is mandated by policy. Showing weapons proficiency is mandated by, by policy. And typically, that also comes, along with that, comes along some firearms training. But we also have ongoing training that happens outside of what policy does. When Lieutenant Johnson came to patrol, she instituted a monthly training SOP review process, where every month, officers are required to, there's a SOP chapter that's assigned that they need to review, as well as some sort of skill base. So for example, this month, for the skills, the officers are reviewing some skills that are needed for negotiators, right? So even though maybe every officer doesn't have negotiate, hostage negotiation school, or what have you, that doesn't mean that the officers don't use those skills, right? The article talks about active listening, and talking in a calm, controlled manner, and trying to de-escalate the situation. These are all things that officers right out of the academy can, can utilize, and is taught to utilize. So that's just an example of, of the types of skills that, skills training that they get on a monthly, monthly schedule. There's also maintenance training that, that happens, to maintain different certifications. So a data master, which is what tells us how much alcohol somebody has in their system on a DUI arrest. That comes up every so often. First aid comes up every so often. Negotiators have to go through that every so often. And some of our various instructors have to go through recertification training to maintain their, their credentials. And then we have specialized position-related training that happens every year. And that's maybe not as, every year, training X doesn't necessarily happen. It's more based on, on the needs. But for example, our SROs, when we have a new SRO come on, they need to go to that initial training session. If I have a new investigator that comes in, or even if I've got investigator that's been there for a while, they've got some training that, that they need to go through as well. So we actually get quite a bit of continued training throughout, throughout the year. We also do some community-based training, where the community comes in and trains us, or we'll go out and provide training for the community. For example, some of the recent ones that we've had was Russian, Russian language and culture training, where somebody from the community came in and talked to the officers a little bit about the Russian culture. Also, communicating effectively with members of the deaf or hard-of-hearing community, and interacting with that. Do training with the school district for active shooter-type response. And as I mentioned before, public appearances out in the, the community is, is requested. Do we have any questions so far on, on those things?
For the benefit of listeners, could you tell us what SOP is?
Standard Operating Procedures. And we'll, I'll get into that maybe a little bit, a couple of slides down here as well. All right. So SOP, or Standard Procedures Manual, or Standard Operating Procedures. In addition to comprehensive training schedule for its officers, Wasilla has adopted enforced policies and procedures that accomplish a few things. One, ensure a full compliance with the standards for police conduct established by the Alaska Police Standards Council. They're reviewed and revised to ensure that new developments and evolutions of law enforcement tactics are adopted. Our policy manual is over 500 pages. Latest version was updated in 2019, and really cover everything from how the officer dresses, to how officers administer force, to how they conduct an investigation. We do have anti-discrimination policies in place. General, under general rules of conduct, discriminatory and prejudicial behavior prohibited. And that states, Wasilla Police Department will not condone, permit, or tolerate on the part of its employees any kind of harassment of persons, whether employees, applicants, or members of the public, on the basis of race, gender, religion, national origin, age, handicap, marital status, change in marital status, pregnancy, parenthood, lifestyle, or other personal characteristics. Wasilla Police Department subscribes to a policy of equality in the provision of service and the application of enforcement action to all citizens. Decisions to arrest, file charges, or to deliver any service to a member of the public shall not be influenced by the person's race, sex, creed, employment, political standing, or beliefs, or any of the other characteristics. We also have one that talks about the fact that we depend on personal integrity and discipline from all of our employees. And to a large degree, the public image of the police department is determined by the professional response that the department has to allegations that people might bring up against its employees. And I'll just start quoting here. Therefore, the department encourages citizens to bring forward legitimate grievances regarding misconduct by employees. Department employees shall receive complaints courteously and shall handle them efficiently. The department shall completely and professionally investigate all allegations of misfeasance, malfeasance, nonfeasance by employees, and complaints bearing on the department's response to community needs. The chief of police shall be notified of all complaints against department employees. Does anybody have any questions so far on those?
Yep. Thank you, chief. I'm curious. So this reads a lot, and it should, like legalese, because I'm sure that it's in place for, much for those reasons. And I'm just curious, how are these, how is the SOP relayed to officers on a continuing basis? Or what does the culture of look like surrounding this? How, how do you integrate SOP into your culture at your police department?
Well, so the, obviously, when an officer is first hired, they have to read through the, through the SOP. Through that field training process, they're also quizzed on SOP, just to help ensure that they have a basic understanding, general understanding of that. As I mentioned previously, on a monthly basis, the SOP is reviewed as well, which then becomes discussion among the shifts, and the sergeants, and the workers. So it's got a basic overview of that.
So it's safe to say that all, all the officers are very familiar with the SOP, not, not just the chapters that they're quizzed on, but probably the whole of it?
Yes, I would say that's
Okay.
Generally accurate, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll talk just briefly about our use of force here, and we'll turn things over after this, I think after this slide, to the attorney. But WPD does adopt use of force continuum per se in its standard operating procedures, and reviews the use of force policy to ensure that we continue to provide the highest level of public safety to our community. And our current use of force policy, again, was updated in 2019. Part of that SOP says, Wasilla Police Department recognizes the complexity of situations necessitating the use of force. Department members follow established authorizations to use force provided by state law under Alaska statute. And at times, officers are confronted with situations where control is required to affect arrests or produce, to protect the public safety. Attempts will be made to achieve control through advice, warnings, and persuasion. However, in situations where resistance, a threat to life, or threat of physical force against others, is encountered, and verbal persuasion has not been effective, is not feasible, or would appear to be ineffective, an officer may use reasonable force. In the event deadly force is utilized, a thorough investigation will be conducted. All use of force will be appropriately investigated, documented, and reviewed by supervisory and command personnel. Department members may use force to effect an arrest, prevent an escape, overcome resistance, in self-defense or in the defense of others. The type and the degree of force used must be reasonable based on the facts and circumstance of the situation. Wasilla Police Department, at, on any level of force that's used that is beyond verbal or officer presence, and the attorney will, will get into that, does do a review on that use of force. And that's done at several different levels independently. The patrol sergeant will take a look at what happened. And oftentimes, the patrol sergeant will be on scene. Sometimes, they're not. But will review the available information for how it applies to policy, best practices, training, things like that. Then it goes to the patrol lieutenant, who will do an independent review of that, and oftentimes watches in-car video, listens to audio, may talk with the officer, read the reports, and is able to provide further input on, on the applicability of how it fits within policy and, and law. And then it ends up on my desk, and I'll take a look at that. And look at, at the available information as well. Beyond that, at times, I may push it to the, the legal counsel, or push it off to another agency for, for a review as well. So every application of force does get, get a review.
Chief, Councilman Brown, excuse me. I see a use of force policy here. How do you teach your officers, or what's your philosophy on teaching your officers? Use of force is one thing. Public perception can change all of that, how the public see you. So you use force between the public, how do you tell them to be aware of public perception? And of course, we know that everybody has a cellphone with a camera now. And depending on what angle that picture was taken from, that's the one that makes it into the paper and what the public sees. So how do you train your people to be aware of public perception?
So that is part of the training that they get at the academy. But it's also part of training that they get throughout the, their ongoing training. You know, it, it's not just people, it's not just the, the public with cellphones, right? Our cars have cameras in them, and are capturing what we're doing. Stores have cameras in them, and are capturing what, what we're doing, or not doing. So officers are well aware of the public perception that they, that they have. What we're not going to do is ask our officers to put themselves in an unsafe position just because of perception. However, with that being said, I think everybody understands that perception does, does matter, whether it's, it's accurate or not accurate. But we can't necessarily always control what that perception is.
Follow-up question. Do you have it somewhere besides in just these two paragraphs? Is there any use of physical force that you prohibit the officers from using?
Under deadly force? No. If a situation requires or authorizes deadly force, an officer is allowed to use whatever tool that, that they have available.
Any strong hand techniques you prohibit?
Right. And I, the, the next, actually, the next section here is going to get into specifically what our, our levels are, and how they, they fall into that.
Thank you.
So just to comment on public perception. By the time a situation has degraded itself to using force, no matter what occurred before it, what will follow is not going to look pretty on the, no matter what you do. I mean, that's just part of the deal. However, within this year, you said that you had, at the very beginning of it, you had 28,000 calls. Of this 28,000 calls, how many times has the Wasilla Police resorted to a use of force that would become reportable to yourself?
Very excellent question. I don't have the number available here this evening, but certainly can, can get that number. I would be comfortable in saying, subjectively, very few.
Chief, you can get that number, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. One thing that, one other point on here, is per policy, also per law, reasonable force is not to be judged with hindsight, and will take into account where appropriate the fact that officers must make rapid decisions regarding the amount of force to be used in tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving situations. Important factors to be considered when deciding how much force to be used. To apprehend a suspect include, but are not limited to, the severity of the crime at issue, whether the suspect poses an immediate threat to the safety of officers or others, whether the suspect is actively resisting or attempting to evade arrest by flight. Policy guidelines applies to all use of force, including deadly force.
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Johnson's question. I think one of the things that is very admirable about your policies and procedures is your requirement that all uses of force are investigated. So I, just to clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is a use of force, it will be brought to the chief's attention. And so that, and that's a, you know, a pretty important distinction. So there shouldn't be any uses of force that are not brought to your attention.
Correct.
A quick follow-up on what city attorney just mentioned. Who conducts these internal investigations? Is it, is it an investigator, or is it, internal investigations are probably a little different. Is it an outside investigation, or is it peer? Is it yourself as the chief? Is it an attorney? How are these things addressed and looked at? How are they investigated?
So again, they're, they're looked at at several different levels independently. So it starts with a patrol sergeant, who may have arrived on scene, and, you know, seen what happened, but certainly has some additional information that, that they can, can review. They will review what happened and provide some sort of recommendation, whether it's within policy, or not within policy, or proper technique, or improper technique. The next stop of that is, it goes to the lieutenant, who will review in-car camera footage and audio, and read the report, and the CAD information, and, and look at, to independently look at the, the information from what the patrol supervisor had, and provide that information. It then ends up on my desk, and for an additional review. It may get pushed on to the legal at that point. It certainly could get pushed on to another agency. Something like a, an officer-involved shooting, typically, right from the get-go, goes to another agency for the initial review, and then comes back to, to us to look at for any policy issues that may have arisen out of that incident as well.
Thank you. Led that to my next question, which is just a follow-up to ask, what you do when there's a fatality or an officer-involved shooting? If that's, you know, handled internally, of course, there could be some bias. And so I was curious how you handled that. You kind of just answered that question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I'm just going to quick click on this to see where our slide is here. All right. So I believe coming up here will be So, I believe coming up here will be the attorney's presentation with the use of force here in the next couple of slides. But let's talk real quick about technology in Wasilla PD, and social media, as well as how that fits into our day-to-day interactions. We have several forms of technology that we use at the police department. Obviously, we're using computers. You know, back when I first started in law enforcement, there was a lot of typewriting and handwriting, and couldn't white out, so you had to rip up what you were halfway through writing and start all over again, and get into it. But now we're not there. We've got in-car cameras, we've got in-car computers, we've got in-car printers, scanners, where we can just scan the person's driver's license and registration, things like that, that are part of, part of our everyday makeup now. But part of that is also, as I've mentioned already previously, is our in-car camera system. And they're pretty robust. They've got forward-facing cameras, as well as cameras in the rear seat. And most of our patrol cars have them installed on them. The systems automatically turn on when the lights are activated, or the speed of the car gets over 70 miles an hour. The audio is turned on, or there's a crash that is detected by the system. The system will automatically turn on. And obviously, the officers have the ability to just flat-turn it on. And the policy does say that there are certain instances where the camera must be turned The reality is that the cameras, I mean, any time you turn the lights on, which is a lot, as we're showing up to scene or doing a traffic stop, the camera system's already operating, so it's not something that the officers have to, have to actually consciously think about. But there are a few times where that needs to happen. All right. We've also integrated a number of safeguards into our operations manual. SOP requires that we review and update that. And, again, that we investigate every use of force application. City's attorney's office is involved with that, to make sure that we're operating within current trends and practices, and also legally defendable. And we also have a public information officer that's responsible for posting press releases, updating our social media page and webpage. And she does work closely with the state troopers, public information officer, as well as APD, and the mayor's office, ultimately, who has the responsibility or the control over public information release. So, any, I know I covered that kind of quickly. Are there any questions about that? All right. And we're going to move on, and this is where the attorney will talk specifically, answering, oh, yes.
I do have a couple of questions for you. I'm wondering about the cameras. Of course, you mentioned all the strengths, all the ways that we're doing really well. Are there any areas where you feel like we need to improve when it comes to equipment and technology as it relates to cameras, and recordings, and things that can be used to, to really tell the story truthfully after the fact?
Well, I guess to address that, I'd say every, every year, there's new technologies that come out, and new capabilities that come out. Just because something has come out and it's new, doesn't mean it's right for us, or right for us right now. But that is something that we do look at, as part of the budgetary process, and what are our deeds, and what, where can we best utilize that? And that's, yeah, I'm one person. I know what I know, but I work in a department that's full of people that also have interests in specialties, and bring those requests and ideas to me as well.
Yeah, thanks. So that was actually my follow-up question, is, you know, how do we, how do we stack up when it comes to technology with other police departments who are obviously nailing it? You know, has there been an effort, I guess, to see what's going on outside the city of Wasilla, outside the state of Alaska, when it comes to community policing, and similar-sized communities with similar-sized police forces, who have really great crime numbers, who have really great officer retention numbers, who have really happy people, you know? What effort has been made, if any, and what does that look like in our city with, to sort of compare and contrast with folks that might be just crushing it, when it comes to this, this stuff in particular, technology-related, police equipment, recording, you know, when does the, when do we record voice, when don't we? When do we record video, when don't we? When do body cameras become helpful? When are they more expensive than they're worth, you know? Is there anybody that's really looked into that, done an in-depth study, either at the city here, or within the police department?
I think to answer that one, I would say that's a pretty broad scope.
Yeah.
And involves an awful lot of potential, right? And without really defining specific things. Frankly, I think Wasilla PD does a pretty good job with these, for our community. But I can also tell you that what is right for Wasilla may not be right for Anchorage, or right for Fairbanks, or vice versa. We do look at what technology is there, and where can we best utilize that? And, you know, what are our capabilities? And what is the input from, what are, what do the officers want? What do they think is valuable? As well as, was that feasible? You know, is that really something that makes sense? And then ultimately, it comes down to dollars and cents and budget.
Because I think it's come up in the strategic planning process. I do think that's a big part of why the mayor and the chief want to go through the strategic plan, because one of those phases is really looking at, not only having the hard conversations and identifying stakeholders, engaging in your community model, but it's also looking at technology and case studies. And the International Police Association has model plans and model programs that are out there, and really show you what's working and what's not working. And then the chief and the mayor can really look at those communities and see if any of that's helpful. But as we prepare for that process, one thing I was impressed with, so you might want to mention this, is your retention in Wasilla is pretty unparalleled, because what you have is officers leaving for one reason only, and that is, so far, I mean, in recent years, what I've seen, they leave to leave the state of Alaska or retire. You do not have officers leaving your police department to go to another police department in Alaska. And that is unusual. So I don't know if you want to speak to that. And I know most of that, what I'm throwing in there, will be for a later day, and for that strategic plan process, but I just, I thought it might be worth.
Yeah. And what Holly has said is right, right on the money. We have not had officers leave to go to work for the troopers, or to go work for the Anchorage Police Department. They're retiring, or they're moving out of state for personal reasons. We've had people from those other agencies look at coming to us, but we haven't had anybody that has actually gone off to a different, different agency within the state.
Chief?
Yep.
I have a question about technology. It's correct that the Wasilla Police Department does not utilize body cameras, right?
That's correct.
Is there any particular reason behind it? Is it a budget decision? Is that the, kind of the feel of the officers? Or could you elaborate on why we don't utilize those?
Well, again, a big part of it comes down to budgetary considerations, and that, you know, we continually look at where that technology is, and what can best utilize, be utilized for us for the job that we do. And, under our previous chief, that was determined not to be, be something that was needed. As I've come in, I mean, it's certainly something I'm not, I don't want to discount. Technology changes all the time. Every year, technology changes. And I'm absolutely willing to, you know, consider any level of technology for the betterment of things. But it does, it does come down to a budget consideration. That may be something to look at for future budget considerations.
Is that something that you plan to look further into, or is it just kind of floating out there as an idea?
Yeah, both. I mean, absolutely. Anything that's out there that can help us do a job better, I'm interested in looking at, whether it's something that we implement or not.
Yeah. I understand, you know, new things come out every year, and technology changes, and we don't always need the best of the best, or the newest, latest model. But I think, you know, body cams definitely serve a purpose. They don't solve the issues. You can look at a body camera and miss a lot of what's going on, because you can't see what's going on around you, you can't feel the presence, just like any other camera. It does miss out on some things, but it does offer some benefit as well, I feel. I know there's integrated systems, and there's, you know, there's standalone body cameras, there's ones that fully integrate with the car, integrate with the vehicle. I know Palmer Police Department just got a whole new system, where it's all integrated together. As soon as they pull up to the station, it automatically dumps the body camera footage from the body camera and the dash camera in the car to their cloud-based system. And anytime anybody logs in to look, even just look at it, even if they only watch a second, it logs where they started, where they stopped, who it was. I mean, there's no real tampering with it. So far, it seems like a great system. But I just, I did have the concerns that we don't have any kind of body camera system. Do all of our vehicles have dash cameras?
Almost all of our vehicles have dash cameras. I believe as we integrate in our, as we get our cars in that have been ordered, and those become outfitted, that we will have all the cars with them.
All of them will be eventually outfitted with a body, or dash camera.
Yep.
Thank you.
Brown, follow-up. I may have misheard you. Is one of the considerations for body cams, is the officers don't particularly like that idea, and that's one of the things that, reason we don't have body cameras?
No. I don't want to present that image at all. In fact, our officers, we've been utilizing in-car cameras since I started with Wasilla PD. They had them before I started with Wasilla PD, back in 2000. And, yeah, again, our officers assume that they're, whether they're utilizing an in-car camera or not, our officers assume that they're on film. Whether it's public filming it, or a store filming it, or there are audio recorders that we all carry on, in addition to a possible car camera. So, yeah, there's not an issue with officers not wanting to do that. Yeah, I don't, don't want to present that at all.
Chief Councilmember Rousa, it sounds to me like, like there is a general opposition to body cameras. Just, I'm just reading body language a little bit, and kind of the words that you're saying, and it just sounds to me like, for some reason, either, A, you don't feel like it's necessary, you mentioned that it's new technology, but it certainly isn't. Phones have been equipped with cameras for over a decade. You know, we're talking about a phone, everybody's got a phone. So if a phone can have a camera, our officers should be practically bionic these days. I mean, you should be equipped to the hilt, and I would hope that for the officer's protection, that they're equipped in the best way possible. There's so many examples of technology being used successfully, and it dates back a long time. You know, if you look outside of America especially, you know, in Europe, I mean, cameras are used in extensive ways by law enforcement, and they do really well in a lot of those instances, keeping crime to a bare minimum. Of course, you know, guns are illegal there too, so we don't want to go to that extent. But, anyway, it's, I'm just, I'm not hearing in plain English what your position is on body cameras, and I would like to hear that in plain English. What is, what is your desire as the chief of police, as it relates to body cameras?
I'm not opposed to body cameras. However, I think what I'm trying to relay is that technology does change, and technology has changed. You know, the video cameras that we used to have in our cars were literally these big VHS cameras that were bungy-corded to the dashboard. That's not the case anymore. Now we've got, you know, digital cameras and things like that. However, we do need to look at what the needs of the department are, and where are those needs in the department? And knowing that budget is not infinite, budget is finite. How can we best utilize those dollars? Frankly, I would rather make sure that all my cars have the in-car cameras before I look at going to a body camera. We've got the in-car cameras, we've got our audio recorders, and it's not that I'm against, you know, having, having it, but knowing that I've got a finite budget to work with. And that things like the body cameras take a lot of money to put into place. It's more than just buying the camera. There's technology that goes along with that, there's staffing that goes along with that. And admittedly, I don't have all the answers. I haven't researched, you know, all the full ins and outs of the body cams. But that's, I guess, in plain English. I'm not opposed to body cameras at all. I'm not opposed to cameras, I'm not opposed to technology implementation, but knowing that money is not, you know, just infinite.
If we could take money off the table, what, where would you, what would you, would you be, is it something that you would, you would appreciate?
We'd consider it, absolutely. Again, the priority would be making sure I've got all my cars that have cameras in them. I've got cars that are serviceable, in good operating condition. I think there's other places, again, if money's off the table, anything could be the answer. But reality is that money's not quite off the table.
Councilmember Johnson, I'm sorry, I have to comment here. There's an assumption that body cameras will actually solve some particular problem out there. However, in the aviation community, for which I am deeply involved in for the last 40 years, infinite amount of recording is made on every pilot transaction, and everything that happens within that cockpit of that airplane. At the end of the day, the amount of recording and the amount of review does not solve the problems of aviation. It helps us in the investigation, it helps us in the defense of a specific event, but it really doesn't solve the initial problem that we're trying to address.
Thank you. Since we are in the committee of a whole, I'd like to make a comment as well, if council doesn't mind. Councilmember Rousa, I'm actually right there with you, Mr. Johnson. Clearly, a camera isn't going to, in and of itself, save a life, right? I heard a little bit when I hear our chief of police, the person charged with public safety, say that budget is a limitation. You know, I think anything related to public safety should be number-one priority over parks and recreation, over road maintenance, you know, until it comes to public safety, right? Until there's such a big pothole that it's hurting people. But, I mean, I think above all, we owe it to the public to provide public safety. And so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, you know, when I hear budget, 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 it makes me think that maybe there's a problem with the budget, and maybe that's the reason. And, no, I didn't hear Mr., I'm sorry, Smith, Chief Smith, say anything about cameras not actually solving crimes, right? And I was actually waiting for that. I was kind of waiting for you to say what Mr. Johnson just said, but I didn't hear it. So I was just curious, what, you know, in a follow-up to Mr. Johnson's comments, what do you think, what sort of problems do you think they might solve, if any? And that's what I was kind of curious about. I was trying to lead you to that, answering that question. I apologize for speaking in code, kind of wasting time here. But, yeah, I mean, what, what good might they do, if any? Or is your opposition, or general opposition to cameras based on the fact that you really don't think that they'd be effective?
Cameras certainly, as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, certainly don't answer everything. It's a one-dimensional view of an activity that happened, and oftentimes, if the... And oftentimes, if the camera isn't directly positioned in the ideal location, it doesn't capture anything other than motion. However, cameras can also be useful and can provide answers, given the right perspective, given the right viewpoint, given the right amount of light. Cameras are problematic. There's technology issues that come along with them. And I'm not, I'm not a technology necessarily person. But, yeah, digital recording devices have some technology issues that come along with it that can actually promote problems over solving some problems. But with that being said, they're not, I don't want to say that they're evil or prevent, you know, present something that along the lines of they don't help solve crime. Because they can. We've solved crime off of in-car cameras. We solve crime off of the doorbell security systems and store security systems as well. They can help tell part of a story, but they're certainly not able to tell the whole story. Any other questions? All right, then moving on, I'll turn it over to the attorney.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Aaron Spurbeck. I'm an attorney with Birch Horton, one of the city's attorneys. First of all, I would just simply say, I'm fascinated by the discussion. I think that the number one thing to, the takeaway right now is community policing is absolutely dynamic, it's not static. You're tackling the very essence of the reason that a presentation like this is important because we as attorneys, we see with a different eye, we hear with a different ear. But at the same time, you know, we have some of the luxury of being able to think theoretically about things, not necessarily practically. And I think it's very important to recognize and commend both the mayor and the chief in this council for taking the first steps to identify that a conversation is appropriate. As we've seen across the nation, there are a number of different issues in all of our different communities. I've taken some notes that I think are just very indicative of, you know, a council that is inquiring, that has questions, that would like to take positive steps in a direction for community outreach. And so I think that, I would just commend you, number one, I think that's important. The reason that we're here and the reason that I'm here specifically is to give you a few insights into the legal side, the things that we look at. I heard it earlier, it wasn't exactly this term, but perception is reality, right? Somebody's perception of an event becomes their reality. And it is absolutely critical that in these opportunities that we have, that we reach out to the community and help to educate. My job, help to educate the council to give you information that you can take back to your constituents that help to define, that help to explain what those realities are, what the, you know, so that they can help to refine their perceptions of different things. The whole purpose of this presentation is to literally take the first step in having those conversations. So I would also point out that, you know, there was a tremendous amount of information conveyed in the PowerPoint presentation, which is literally scratching the surface of the standard operating procedures. You got to see less than half a page of a 500-page manual. That is literally setting the expectation of what this department and what this city council demands of these officers. That is the base, right? We want exceptionalism. We want those people to exceed that bare minimum. And so the standard operating procedures are simply the guidelines that would set that expectation for performance before, during, and after any kind of a police activity, when they're out doing their job. That's what we expect of you. Those are my introductory comments. Let me tell you a little bit why you should even care to listen to me. And I know that you've been here for a while. I don't want to take up more of your time than is necessary. But I think it's important to understand where I'm coming from as I speak to you because my experience, you know, I'm born in, not born in Alaska, but I'm raised in Alaska. I'm from Anchorage. I've spent a lot of time all over the state. I went to school outside, but I came back. It was one of the passions that I had was to come back to Alaska and serve my community. In doing that, I have had a very great opportunity to serve as district attorney in Anchorage. I served in the DA's office for about five years. I was a prosecutor. I worked with law enforcement agencies all over the state. I worked with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. So the inter-agency, federal jurisdictions. I spent a tremendous amount of time just working with law enforcement officers and it was something that was very valuable and helped guide what I do. In private practice, I had the opportunity to work as a defense attorney. And I went on to the other side of things. And I handled cases from the other side of the bench, so to speak. I have also had the opportunity to receive some important training that is, it gives me some insight into the way police officers conduct themselves. I've been certified as a force science analyst through some nationally-recognized trainings, deals with the application of law to human performance and specifically officer performance under stress. This is very important information that I use to then take to law enforcement agencies that I work with around the state of Alaska and help consult with them, help to review use of force policies, help to review standard operating procedures and make sure that they are living up to the community's expectations for what it is that this particular community needs from their police department for public safety purposes and what things they can do better. So that's just a little bit of the background that I have. I think that, you know, in my role as a city attorney for this department and in consultation with the chief, this department does a lot of things absolutely right. And all of their conduct is really kind of the key of what, I guess I have power of the clicker here. So let me just kind of run through, let's see here. I'm just going to put all these up here. You have these on your slides. But one of the, one of the things to recognize about the use of force is, I like to characterize it this way. When I've taught at the Anchorage Police Academy, when I've taught at Homeland Securities Academies and AST Academies and I've lectured on use of force, I say it this way. An officer arrives to a very dynamic situation with limited information and a toolbox of training that they have received either through an academy or through a, you know, field training program or just on-the-job continuing education, trainings that they might have gone through, as the chief had mentioned. And that officer is, while they have standard operating procedures that are going to govern expectations, the one thing to keep in mind is that officer is always, always, 100% responsible, under the law, state laws and federal laws, for what their conduct is. So it is very important to recognize that all use of force policies, no matter if it's in Wasilla or if it's in California, those use of force policies will be guided by longstanding legal principles that tell us what is a reasonable use of force? How should that force be applied in particular situations? There's no one particular cookbook that says, well, if you encounter this thing and you encounter that thing, then you should act this way. That is not how policing operates. Every day when I work with police officers and I consult with them, they have to do one thing, and that is to identify what is the threat. And then they have to pull from their toolbox, what is the most appropriate tool or training that I have to deal with that particular situation? It may be as simple as what we would call a command presence. The officer shows up, uniform, maybe the lights are on, and all of a sudden, there is an air of authority that wasn't there before. And that officer's presence alone is enough to de-escalate. There could be a dialogue. There could be communication, what people refer to often as verbal judo or de-escalation tactics. There's a conversation. I think one of the important themes early on in the chief's comments were that, you know, he comes from a social services background. A lot of officers, you wear different hats. You're not just a police officer. You are a representative of the city. Professionalism is what is, should be the first and foremost. And then having the ability to take the tools you have to de-escalate that situation as best as you can. And so I think what's important to point out is, when you talk about a continuum, you can see that just from the standard operating procedures, what the Wasilla Police Department has in their, kind of their manual of trained tactics would be officer presence, verbal commands, you know, asking people to come over, "Come over here and talk to me. What's going on? No, you stay there, I want to talk to this person first, I'll talk to you in a second." Right, just breaking up the situation, talking, having a dialogue, understanding. Then that could go, it could progress into what we would call soft-hand tactics, which might be guiding somebody, things that are, compliance is not being gained through a conversation. So that, for whatever reason, whether it be the behavior of the particular individual or an escalation of tensions, or you need to, you're the only person there and you need to start to think about your own safety and de-escalating the situation for your safety or for the safety of other folks. It may move up that chain accordingly. And at the end of the day, like I said, it is the responsibility of each and every officer, under the state laws, under the federal laws, to administer those trainings reasonably and effectively to accomplish the job that they're being asked to do. And we have to admit, they're being asked to do a very difficult job, especially in today's day and age. So those concepts, and again, this is a very high-level explanation. Certainly, I would not say this is going to answer all of your questions, but what it should do is probably have you writing down a lot of questions that can be taken into the next phase of this conversation and the next phase and the next. But it is important to recognize that these officers are being trained. They are encouraged to use the absolute least amount of force that would be necessary. And then that process, if there is force used, as the chief described, that process is reviewed. It's reviewed internally. There's an opportunity for, if it's an increased use of force, for it to be reviewed externally. And in the state of Alaska, the state of Alaska would have the use of force ultimately being reviewed by the Office of Special Prosecutions, which could levy a criminal charge against the officer if they deemed that the use of force was excessive beyond what the legal thresholds would allow. And in Alaska, Title 11 governs use of force and it outlines a justification defense for officers under certain circumstances. So, you know, so my purpose here is really to say, listen, you have incredible questions. You have a very difficult job to do. But within those, within those two spheres, you have an opportunity to really capture the community's interest and to have the chief come before you and talk to you and have the dialogue and have the discussion. And that really is going to be by far the most important thing that the council can do as we take it to the next step in this conversation, which is, how do we move forward? Right, this is not, it's not static. Today won't stay today, it's going to continue. We're going to continue having discussions and dialogues and incidents. And from every one of those, we have to be able to be prepared and to learn what we need to do better. Councilman, you said, you know, if money's not on the table. Well, I have a long laundry list of things that I would recommend to every single one of the police departments and law enforcement agencies that I work with. But the reality is, again, that money is always on the table. So then really the question becomes, what is the priority, right? What is the priority in community safety? What is community safety? Is it fixing the pothole? Or is it making sure that all of the officers are well-outfitted? Or is it pouring more resources into community outreach programs that reach different communities, as you said, councilman? I mean, those are the types of questions that this presentation and this conversation is geared to start. That's really the key. And you have an administration that is willing to sit down and have the conversation, a chief that's an engaged chief, a council that's interested. This is the opportunity that this council has to really grab that. Those are my comments.
Councilman Brown, questions, several things you said there. First, you as the legal representative and the chief as the manager should not present to the public that it's about the police officer being safe. That is a very important aspect of it. But when we put on the uniform, we say, subconsciously, we say, the public is the most important thing right now. I plan to go home, I plan to be safe, I plan not to get hurt, but the public is the most important thing. And I keep hearing comments about protecting the officer, protecting the officer. And that is very important. And I'm speaking from knowledge, not from hearsay. That's very important. But I want us to make sure that whatever policies we have in place, that they are looked from a viewpoint of how this will affect the public, how this will serve the public, how this will protect the public. And hopefully you will give legal advice, how you can protect his officers at the same time. But don't forget that major, major piece of public safety, and that's the public. And said you was going to cover the use of force here. I'm sure you're familiar around the country, most police departments have done away with the chokehold. And self-experienced public, state troopers started discouraging it 20 years ago. And that's what I was looking at. What are we doing to address uses of force and how that affects certain things? And public perception, how we engage in the job? Not saying it's also not, we are trained and have good intentions, that is not my point here. My point is, how do we do things so when the public sees us do it, we don't get letters like we got in the paper and to the city and to a bunch of us about what happened at Walmart? Nobody wants the officer to be hurt, but I also want to leave the citizen with some dignity and respect also. So how do you advise, from a legal standpoint, how do we meet those two opposing forces, officer safety and public perception and public safety?
Councilman Brown, I mean, that's exactly the issues that we need to address, is how do we deal with the intersection of those two different perceptions? And one of the, I'm not going to tell you the answer right now because it's always an evolving conversation, but you're absolutely right. I mean, I think that the vehicles, the police vehicles say, protect and serve, right? It's not just protect yourself, it's protect this community. And that is a critical piece of the perception that the community outreach needs to tackle. The chief alluded to the idea that, you know, this is the opportunity, and I've kind of alluded to this as well, is this is the opportunity to help educate the community about policing. But there's no question that when an officer puts on a uniform, they're accepting some degree of risk. And that risk cannot be shifted 100% to the community to, don't harm me, right? But there is a very interesting issue here, which, I mean, this goes a little higher level, but the law is dated back to 1989. Things were very different in 1989 when Graham v. Connor was decided that judges the office- Things were very different in 1989 when Graham v. Connor was decided that judges the officer's conduct based on, was it reasonable in the officer's shoes at the time? Not looking in 2020 hindsight, not looking at, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking it. It's that officer was that reasonable in the moment. That's the state of the law. And I think, councilman, that what you're finding is that right now, the, the laws need to catch up and they need to account for those kinds of things. But part of that is also that the police departments have to get out and be members of the community. They need to address some of the stereotypes that come with policing. They also need to just be open to change. Right? Again, they need to be dynamic in their abilities to change. So you're touching on all the right points and the council is, you're right to be asking, the public is right to be questioning, but it's part of the education process. Everybody needs to understand that, that the training, again, it's a toolbox and that toolbox does not have every single thing in it. So if there are, I mean, this is one of the things that the chief did mention and I, I'm very excited about, is the concept that you bring in all the stakeholders to help advise. I don't know all the answers. I, I very, I very often like to relish in the fact that I am not the smartest person in the room. I don't want to be the smartest person in the room. I want other people to help educate me. And my perceptions are mine, based on my life experiences, which could be vastly different than anybody else in this room. And so for those folks to help educate me gives me a different insight. And so I think that bringing the stakeholders from all of the different community sectors is absolutely critical to the success of any kind of long-term policing plan that we would, that this council might choose to put together. And so that's really the next step. And again, I mean, this is little, this is baby steps. We're having a conversation, but you're touching on all the right points. And I think that the, the timing is right to have the conversation, if not a little late, but this is why we're here.
I'd like to just piggyback on that just to add a couple of things. But you know, one of the, one thing I want to add is while the mayor and department are going through a strategic-
Madam Mayor, can she speak in the microphone, please?
Oh, maybe I turn it off.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is, thank you.
You know, that process, it will be, you know, they will develop that strategic plan. There will be meetings with stakeholders, involvement with council, evaluations. There's a lot of components, but that plan will then, I mean, that's an administrative plan, just under the, the way that the Wasilla code is designed and the way the administration of authority is in that. So I just don't want to oversell that this would be the plan of council. This will be the plan of the department with a lot of engagement and hard conversations that council is very important too. But I just want to be, because I think one of the things we've talked about is just making sure that this is accurate and transparent throughout the entire process. Otherwise, we lose credibility and that doesn't get us anywhere. So that's one thing I did want to say. The other thing I wanted to say is when looking at use of force policies in communities, including Wasillas, sometimes they can tell us a little bit of where we are and where we have to go. And it is important because a big piece of tonight is informational, just sort of knowing where you are and then having those conversations about where you go. And having a newly elected mayor and a newly appointed chief is the perfect time for them to take ownership and, and, and start that process. Your use of force policy has a continuum that includes, I believe, nine different stages of the use of force. If you look at nonprofit organizations throughout the country right now that are looking at ways to build public credibility and public trust in the law enforcement agencies, there are many, there's sort of a, a wish list. And there are many things on that list that, you know, that are, there's, it's a long list. And I know that that's one of the things we're doing, is looking at that list. Some of those things are not in place in Wasillas, some are. Your use of force continuum, a continuum is on the list. They want to see communities adopting a use of force policy continuum. The Wasilla use of force continuum is much more in-depth and specific. So it is the wish list plus in many ways because it has those steps of force. It's broken them down, not just into the five, you know, verbal, soft hand, hard hand, deadly force. You know, I mean, that's, that's what you often see is sort of a triangle with five or six continuums. Correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, on, on that one, but that's, and so this is a, it's also a celebration. That's a good thing. That's a good thing that we have here in this community that was put in place last year. So it's not, it's, you know, it's fairly new, but it was in 2019 that that was updated and adopted. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're talking so much about where you want to go. And that's wonderful. And that's why, you know, the chief brought Aaron here too, to make sure you understand all of those pieces. But it's also important that the community understand where you've been and what you have in place.
Thank you for that. And, and I'm not concerned about the nine steps. And that's why when I asked the chief, I asked him his philosophy and how he communicated with his officers. I know as a supervisor, law enforcement supervisor, what's written down is one thing. What we talk about in the squad room and what my sergeant, what he believes, how he acts is how I, as a new officer is going to act. And how the chief relays his opinion about those written rules is how I'm going to act. So I wasn't concerned about the written law. I was asking him his philosophy and how he communicated with his officers on these different issues. And that's, that's what makes the difference between professional law enforcement and what the book says. The book doesn't get us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions?
I appreciate Councilmember Brown's comments. Some of my own questions were leading in that direction, just about, you know, how we develop a professional police culture and how we really learn to emulate the, what the SOP says, you know, as, as a new recruit especially. And, and does that, does the culture amongst long, long-serving officers really represent the spirit of the law or, you know, the SOP as it's written? Some, you know, those are tough questions and very reflective questions, of course. And it's like, I, I couldn't expect a simple answer, but Councilmember Brown, I think you were kind of hitting on those, that, that, sort of that same thread. I'd love to hear everything you had to say about it. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess in talking about the, the use of force and, and the policy, how does it get relayed, things like that. It is, we don't use force all the time. Most of the time, we don't use force at all, outside of officer presence, verbal commands. You know, thinking subjectively back over the years, I've actually been in very few situations where I had to use a higher level of force, you know, some sort of thing where we were in a physical fight. Most of the time, verbal commands or having multiple officers there can sometimes just de-escalate the situation. And that is something that is taught early on at the academy. It's something that does get touched on at the police department. Teaching use of force was something that I had done for a while in, in my career as well, and in, in relaying that. And, you know, it, it, especially with the, all the tools that are available now, it, it's a lot harder to teach a new officer. Right? Because it, it, back in the day, you had a firearm, you had a baton, you had OC or, you know, your pepper spray and your hands. And that was about it. Now we've got tasers and now we've got bean bags and different force tools that, that can be utilized. And it's, I, I used to think of it, it was, it used to be kind of a connect the dot thing when it was a few tools. Now, with all the tools that we have, it's more playing chess. It's understanding the sliding scale and what, what, what does this tool do in this particular situation? Because something that may typically be a less lethal option in a certain particular situation may be a lethal option. And that's all stuff that a new officer has to understand on top of all the other things that they're having to learn and understand and, and deal with. So certainly how our officers respond and react is something that's, that's important to us. And part of that, that review process that happens with an after-action review of use of force, gives the sergeant the opportunity to, to review those things, gives the lieutenant an opportunity to review those things and either have a discussion with sergeant or have a discussion with the, the officer, however that, however that plays out. And it, it's something that we do take seriously. We, we, we review those incidences where force is used. And we'll have those discussions with, with an officer if, if we think that something isn't, isn't right or could be done better. Or even if it's something as simple as an improper technique, the, the application was proper, the, the technique was, the use of that technique was proper, but maybe they're a little bit rusty because they haven't been through training for a while or they, they forgot or, or whatever. Maybe it's just as simple as, as reviewing that. But certainly that, that is important. I think as, you know, the attorneys pointed out, we're at where we're at. But the question is, where, where do we go from here? How do we move forward? Yeah, there's been talk of strategic plan. It looks like that we're, I didn't see the last slide that did talk about strategic plan up there, and I don't know if that's in your-
It's in your head.
In, in your packet.
You want to go through the very last slide? It is in there.
Yeah.
Here. Out of work.
Out there.
There we go. All right. So what, what does a head look like? That's the question. What does a head look like? And it is, it's something that, you know, I can say has been reviewed in the past. And it's something that will hopefully continue, you know, because per policy, it's something that should be continuing on an ongoing basis through the future. But what does that look like right now? What does that look like today for, for Wasilla Police Department? And one of those things that, that Mayor and I have talked about is developing some sort of a strategic plan. And that's, I don't think that's something that's been done previously by Wasilla PD and, and kind of having a, a purposeful forward movement in, in these things. And frankly, those discussions are just starting. Where are we going to go? What is this going to look like? Well, you know, we, we know that community engagement is important, that input is important. How does this look? That is important. How does this apply to one group versus another group? That's important. So I can't sit here today or tonight and say, here's the five or six steps to our strategic plan, other than to say that we're at the beginning stages of this and starting to form that. That's something that City Council will, through a discussion with the mayor, that shall keep you informed and I'll try to keep you informed on, on where we're at with that process. But what are some things that Wasilla PD has done before and what are some things that this sort of thing could look like? You know, things like developing neighborhood watch program, some training, that would be good. We have done that in the past. Sponsoring lead training meetings about hardening homes or, or, you know, providing some anti-theft education for folks. Business outreach, and that's something we've done before as well, as we've reached out to businesses as well. And, you know, what are their floor plans? What's their alarm? We're kind of getting a look at if there is a problem there, what's our best approach and, and who can we communicate with? Just reviewing again our, our programs that we have, our training that we have and, and making sure that they're up to, up to snuff. We talked about tools. We spent a lot of time talking about tools tonight. And reviewing that, I mean, what, what are, what technology is there and, and the budget constraints that may be in place or may not be in place, but how would, how would that look? I know there's been questions about, you know, council and, and how they're notified about things or the communication that, that comes from the police department, and that's discussions that the mayor and I are planning on having. And the revitalization of that reserve program or law enforcement explorer program. The reserve program is something that I know City is, City Council is interested in and having that program up and, up and going. I think I've mentioned the council previously that I started off as, as a reserve officer. I've got a special place in my heart for a reserve officer. Also was lead advisor for an explorer program a long time ago. I've got a special place for that too. But again, you know, it, it takes special people to run that. It takes interest to, to run that, and time to run that. I'm new in my appointed position. And I certainly don't want to project that things that have happened in the past aren't correct or are correct. I guess we are where we are. And, and our policy manual is our policy manual, our training is our training, the laws that we follow, the statutes that we follow, the statutes that we follow. But there is an interest in moving forward. There's an interest in, in having these discussions. There's an interest in including stakeholders in the community in, in having these discussions and at least trying to move forward from there. Which direction is forward? Tonight, I don't know what direction forward is. But moving one direction or another. There's an adage in law enforcement that says, don't just stand there, do something. And I think that's, that's where we're at tonight. We're, we know we need to do something and to, to move both the department forward and the community forward. And I will say one thing, and that is that we have received tremendous support from our community. It's been overwhelming, the support that we've gotten from our community. And I don't want to keep banging the drum of the new police department, but that was phenomenal. That was a community support piece in raising the taxes to, to buy us that new building. You know, that was, that's so phenomenal that, that that was able to happen. The people had just stopped by and say, hey, we appreciate you. Kids making cards or cookies or, or whatever. We, we, that, that happens all the time. You also see it in, in social media. But we also understand that there are changes that could be made and there's other people that have other opinions and that want to be part of that discussion, and we're open to that.
Chief Smith, this is Councilman Johnson. Earlier I mentioned what didn't necessarily work in aviation in terms of improving safety. But now let's talk about something which is positive and what actually we did find worked within the aviation community, which greatly reduced our accident rates within the United States and within the world. And you mentioned two of them. You had a strategic plan and you said an updated training program. Well, we in the aviation realize that is what we really needed on a pilot or a mechanic basis, is a program which is iterative, continual, and happens at the very lowest level of action, if you will. By the time that you're using force, I'm not going to say it's a failure, but that is something that you would obviously want to avoid. So you would want to look at the feedback of what would happen as to how we got to those situations. And so we in the aviation community will look at, say, pilot actions, not, not before we're going to have an incident, but trying to do that, you know, 50 miles away from the incident. It's called a FOCO program. And it, we, we sample various actions on a continuous basis. We take our whole pilot corps, we review impersonally the actions that were taken and then review as our pilot corps learns from, well, we could have actually done this a little bit better out here and would have had a much better effect overall. So I, I don't want to go down the path in saying that a laissez-faire attitude with the use of force is in the best interest of the public. For certain, if we do not, if we have the perception that people can have any kind of an action that they want to, that is not in the best interest of public safety either. So there is a time where unfortunately the use of force will be needed. But let's, maybe we should look at sort of a quality assurance program that we could use internally within the department.
So I have some questions and these might, might turn into sort of action So I have some questions, and these might turn into sort of action items, I guess, that I would like to see. First of all, you know, my question is, you're now the chief. You've been chief since, you said it's a newly appointed position.
Right. I was acting chief, appointed a little over a year ago as acting chief, and then when Mayor Ledford came in, I was appointed as chief.
Thank you. And I'm, of course, new myself, so that's why I don't know that I should probably be paying more attention as a resident of the city of Wasilla who our acting chief is, right? But so I digress. As chief, I mean, I think you know your department best, and you've probably been there long enough certainly to know the culture, to know the daily operations, to know the comings and goings of your officers, to know who's new, who's old, you know, who needs improvement, who's got a bad attitude, who frequently has, you know, takes a long lunch on Tuesday, everything, I'm sure. What are, I heard a whole lot of strengths, and I'm very pleased to know that we have a strong police community and everything. There's a lot to brag about, for sure, and that's good. I like that. It's excellent. I'm just really wanting to know, what are the weaknesses in your view? Certainly, there's some. There's got to be some. Now, I did see some in the back page here. You just covered areas where you feel like we can do better. So what are these, are there any just outright weaknesses that you've identified? We see areas where, you know, goals and objectives, and I like that. And then, as a follow-up to that, what's the reason for, what would be the primary reason that you feel held back or that you actually are held back, whether it be finance or just support from the mayor's office, DRSI, or council, or the community, or just the culture that you have at the police department? What doesn't allow you to, you know, push something forward as hard as you want to, et cetera? Could you just hit on a few things that come to mind?
Sure. So the, as you mentioned, we do a lot of things right. And frankly, I'm very proud of the men and women that work in our agency. I'm humbled by their abilities daily. Their success becomes my success, becomes everybody's success. One of the hurdles that we have is that we also have a relatively young department. And by young, I don't mean how long the agency has been around, but we've got several new officers that work for us. And as they gain experience and as they gain knowledge and tenure, we will continue to become stronger and stronger. One of the things that has slowed us down a little bit is we have not been fully staffed for years. Every time we approach fully staff, we have somebody retire or, you know, somebody leaves state for whatever reason. And that does affect our overall ability to handle all the areas of responsibility that we have as well. Again, I know you touched on a lot of different, a lot of different things, but yeah, you know, I would say that the mayor's office is very supportive of the police department. And really, I think council is as well. I truly feel that everybody has an interest, a genuine interest in the police department and the success of the police department, professionalism in the police department and in us presenting ourselves well within the community. So yeah, I do feel like there's that support. I don't think there's, you asked if there's something holding us back. I would say the only thing holding us back is our, it's difficult to find folks to fully staff the agency with.
Thank you. So as actual action items, I would personally like to see a comprehensive review of the wages and compensation program that we have in place for officers as it relates to time on the job, how attractive are, where do we stack up? Now, I actually made a poor attempt to do this on my own as just a layman, right, Googling things. Bad way to go. I don't recommend it. Very difficult, okay? But I do know that we have the resources within the city to really take a hard look at that and not just compare with neighboring police agencies. You brought up yourself, chief, that, you know, we're not Palmer, we're not Anchorage, we're not Juneau, we're not Fairbanks, we're the city of Wasilla. But I think that there probably are communities similar to ours in a lot of ways, you know, cost of living, et cetera. It would be my desire to see that our officers are paid very well for what they do, if they are in fact doing a very good job, which I believe they are. The other thing that I'd like to really see an action on is just kind of a comprehensive review of our training programs, especially for new recruits. You know, you mentioned there's, you mentioned the 16-week, like, probation period or?
Field training.
Field training, okay. Thank you. During that, you mentioned, you know, that there's a checklist, and I asked the question, is that the ideal or does it actually happen? And I believe that it's the desire of the police department, based on your answer, that it happens. I'm just not sure, also from your response, that it can always in reality. And I'd like to make sure that, you know, our training and support of new recruits is top-notch, is absolutely just top shelf. And if there's something that council can do to provide additional resources to make sure that happens, yeah, sure, it might come down to the budget. That's money well spent, in my view. I think that, you know, we could do more parkour courses, but I think that we'd be better served and serving the community better to make sure that our new recruits are treated very well, trained very well, that they wouldn't be trained any better anywhere else, that they're getting the very best right here in the city of Wasilla. And then I'd really like to see some actual figures, some demographic-type figures, like, what are the, what are our, well, I mentioned wages and compensation, and I would like to see that, actual figures for current pay scales versus how long they've been there, that, you know, that sort of thing. Maybe training gets somebody paid better at a college degree or something, I don't know. But anyway, the other thing I'm real curious about is the, just the overall gender and racial makeup of our police force. And I know that could be a contentious topic for people, but what I do understand, my best friend through high school is an Athabaskan, Alaska-native man. Now, he's a man. He wasn't then, of course, but super good friend of mine. You know, we went and did missions trips down in Guatemala and Mexico together, you know, saw those communities of people. I can tell you that people come from all over the place, and they've got different life stories, different backgrounds and things. Doesn't mean that they're better or worse, of course, and everybody here knows that, I'm sure. But there are people that are better suited to approach people of those communities with people from different backgrounds. There's people that are just better equipped to handle issues within other races, other genders, you know, that sort of thing, it's the genders, you know. I'm talking about two genders primarily. But I, you know, so I would like to see some numbers on that, I guess. And I'm not sure how to ask that question. Talked to Jamie about this a little bit, wasn't sure if I should even bring it up, but I think it's important that we have a high level of diversity within our police force in order to sort of foster a culture, an actual, like, you know, culture of just respect across the board for, and I know that that's the desire of, you know, and what's expressed in the SOP, from what I could tell. That's the spirit of the document, but how are we walking that out? How are we actually making sure, how are we sort of like forcing that thing to come alive in our police department every day? Not saying anyone's doing a bad job. I actually don't know. Just quite frankly, I really don't know what this looks like on a daily basis, but I would like to see kind of a comprehensive review of it, a report drafted, you know, where do we stand? Where do we need to improve? How can we do better? So if, for action items, that's what I have, that's.
Councilman Rosso, this is Councilman Johnson. I disagree with your concept. The reason that I disagree with it is the demographics of a specific nature of employment really reflect the demographics of the department as people apply. So what the demographics are today is a really a snapshot of, not a snapshot, is what is a history of the last 15 years. So if we were to look at demographics, that would mean absolutely nothing with our hiring policies going forward. So just because we have X percentage of this being, this racial group or this ethnic whatever, whatever, in our police force now, has really nothing to do with our hiring policies going forward. I would perfectly like to see exactly what you're trying to say. Now, on a personal level, I've experienced this. I tried to hire engineers when I was at Allegiant Airlines. We had a diversity goal, and we were going to make it. Unfortunately, trying to find an engineer, you know, I was able to finally find engineers to fill my spot, but I had no control over who really applied, and I was desperate to find anybody, let alone a specific ratio of ethnic diversity. Now.
Just a quick thing to the chief here. He mentioned pay. Could be from wrong. The professional officer who stays, it makes the politician feel good by giving out raises, but it doesn't affect that police officer being a profession and staying for the job. Raise is not keeping your guys there. It is the group camaraderie, the professionalism and what they believe in, and all pay does is make politicians feel good that they did something. Am I right about that?
I will say that I'm sure if there was a pay raise, nobody would.
Yes, yeah.
I'm confident in that. I do feel that our officers are paid pretty well.
Yes.
For what they do. Could they be paid more?
Everybody could.
Everybody could. Honestly, I don't know what our pay scale is in relation to other agencies our size across the state. I have no idea. I've felt that I've been, I can tell you, over the years, I've felt that I've been adequately compensated for the work that I've done. And yeah, I guess I'll leave it at that. I don't, like I said, I don't know what other agencies are paying. I don't know where we are in relation to that. And that's, that is a contractual thing through the negotiation process with WPDEA, so it's not something that, I don't, I guess, I mean, that's a question for Troy. I don't, it's not really something we could just say, well, we're doing the pay scale different, but negotiations are coming up, so.
Chief, let me interrupt you. It is after 8:00, and we will take a seven-minute break. We are back on the record at 8:10. Councilmember Vlach and Bernie, are you still with us?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We are back on the record at 8:10. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor? Councilmember Rosso?
Yes.
If I may, 30 seconds.
You've got 30 seconds. So let's go.
So in response to Mr. Johnson's comments, I do think that it would be entirely inappropriate to hire somebody or not based on their race and so, or gender, right? Which, of course, you know, I think the labor laws agree with me, right? So, you know, how do you take that off the table? I don't know. Really, what I'm trying to drive at is how do we improve the culture so that it's receptive and open to, of course, all races, creeds, religions, genders, et cetera. Mr. Graham misinterpreted my words on another occasion, and I didn't want that to happen again on this occasion, for sure. Apparently, the way I speak can be interpreted many different ways. So, yeah, that was the spirit of my comment, for sure. As far as pay goes, I would ask just one more question on pay. Why are we having a hard time filling positions at the city of Wasilla if our pay is right where it should be?
Well, I think that's a philosophical question that I don't know that I've got, I don't know that I've got an answer for that. We have filled several of our positions. We've hired a lot of people over the last few years. In fact, we've got one that we just hired here recently that's in field training right now. So we are hiring people. We are finding people to hire. But as I mentioned, we're struggling to fill all the positions. We're currently, I'm down two positions. I've been down more, I've been down less, but there's normal attrition you have, people retiring, people leaving. You know, there's, to have a fully staffed department, I think, on a long-term basis, may be hard. Why don't we get more people? Could it be money? Could be money. Could it be Alaska? It could be Alaska. It could be Wasilla. It could be Wasilla. I don't have the answer for that.
Thank you. So as a council member, I would like to see about a 10-year snapshot of just the comings and goings and the pay scales of officers while they're, while they've been here. About a 10-year snapshot, just how many positions were available throughout that time? How many were filled? And I'm sure you can answer the question now, how many are positions, how many, 28, I think, but how many are filled? How many officers do we have now?
Twenty-eight authorized, and I'm down two right now.
Thank you. And I don't expect those answers here now, obviously, but yeah, sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I need a motion to exit the committee of the whole.
Councilmember Johnson moves to go out of discussion as a whole.
Councilman Brown second.
It's been moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Brown, to exit the committee of the whole. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is audience comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the city council at this time? Please state your name for the record.
Mayor Ledford. Councilmembers, my name is Elizabeth Ripley, and I serve as CEO of the Matsui Health Foundation, which shares ownership in Matsui Regional Medical Center. We take our share of the profits, and we invest them back into the community in the form of grants and scholarships. Our goal is to measurably improve the health of Matsui residents through strategic investments, convening of local partners, and policy change. While the video of an Alaska-native woman being arrested and hogtied by Wasilla police in Walmart brings us here tonight, I want to focus on solutions we can engage in to help prevent such instances in the future. Law enforcement has been one of our best partners in creating meaningful systems improvements to behavioral health in our community. When we conducted our first community health needs assessment, Matsui residents told us the top five health issues affecting their families were all related to mental health and substance use. We interviewed your previous chief and others for a follow-up report on the behavioral health crisis response system in Matsui. It showed that our police, troopers, and emergency department are on the front lines of these crises in Matsui, but not adequately equipped to address. None of this was a surprise to your officers. The report recommended we form a crisis intervention team, or CIT, in Matsui. Then Captain Brinkie of the Palmer detachment of ASD took that recommendation and ran with it. He took the 40-hour training developed by law enforcement and started giving different instructions to his officers. He had some tangible wins that kept his officers safe and de-escalated violent situations. He wanted to expand it for more troopers and local police and form the Matsui Crisis Intervention Team Coalition, which has helped most first responders in Matsui get mental health first aid training and launched three CIT cohorts of specially-trained officers. Most of your officers have had mental health first aid training, but only Most of your officers have had mental health first aid training, but only six have had CIT training. Police departments in different parts of the country have reduced the use of force, some by as much as 90%, through deployment of the CIT model, which reduces both stigma and the need for further involvement with the criminal justice system. The goals of a crisis intervention team are to improve community member and officer safety, and to help people with mental disorders and other addictions access medical treatment. The Matsui Health Foundation and the Alaska Mental Health Trust support all aspects of the CIT Training Academy, from funding the local CIT coalition meetings, to paying to backfill officer shifts and overtime required for officer training at the CIT Academy. AST has been actively engaged in the program, with 25 troopers trained and reported remarkable success, but so far, we have not seen the Wasilla Police Department take full advantage of this opportunity to support not only the broader community, but its own officers. We recognize the city budgets are tight, but I want to reiterate that we will do whatever it takes to ensure CIT trainings are available to the Wasilla Police Department officers within the next year. Proper crisis training for first responders helps to alleviate trauma for citizens in behavioral health crises, their family members, their neighbors, and all who witnessed the crisis, including the law enforcement officers so often called upon to help. We encourage W P D to take advantage of CIT, and thank you for holding this hearing, we appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm just here to comment on an article that brought us all here tonight, which was running in Frontiers on the Mar- March 7th of this year titled "Acknowledging the Pain." I think that's a poorly-written article. I think it, I think it did more harm than good. The second line in the article goes to talk about restraining a person of color. I hope we restrain everybody the same. I don't care what color you are, it shouldn't matter, and it shouldn't matter what sex you are. We shouldn't have different rules and regulations. I would hope that the policies and procedures that the Wasilla PD follows applies to all persons equally. And if them policies and procedures need to be updated, then they need to be updated. Writing letters after only hearing one side or seeing one side of a story is not the way to solve things. So for Mr. Bernie who's listening, this is your sixth year on this Wasilla City Council. Mr. Harvey, you've been here for five years. How many times has a police department been here for questioning the way they run their policy and procedures on restraints? I can only think of one, and I worked for the city for nine years. And in nine years, that one person who was demonstrating in front of a state building was asked to leave repeatedly, did not leave, Wasilla PD was called, Wasilla PD asked him to leave, just leave, that person would not leave, he wanted to be arrested, he got arrested, didn't like the way he was arrested, so his attorney came in and said, if you'll dismiss the charges, we'll dismiss the false arrest and illegal arrest and police brutality. It was, it was a, it was a trick to get it reduced. So once in nine years. So if we need to update the policies and procedures, there's ways to do that, but writing letters and trying to talk about how people of color are being treated different, I think is wrong. So I saw, saw the letter in the paper, and it was signed by Matsui Health Foundation, there was 10 different signatures on that letter. There was a lot of people in Walmart that day. I didn't know so many people could be at that scene to see and witness what happened there, and some of these people came from Bethel and Homer. There were a lot of people in Walmart that witnessed what happened that day. It weren't, in this Monday morning quarterback, officers have to be able to protect themselves. I spent 22 years as a police officer, eight years as a police chief. Officers have to be able to protect themselves, we have to be able to protect the public, we have to be able to protect a suspect. All three of them, I think, need to be addressed. If our policies and procedures need to be updated, I would ask what AST does. They have policies and procedures in, in place, they seem to work. What would, what would AST do if this was an AST case sitting here today? So I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. You have the, there's tools out there, there's federal guidelines, there's state guidelines, we don't need to reinvent the wheel unless you have an open checkbook. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and now we are going on to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just that we have our next regular meeting, next Monday, March 22nd, we'll see you all here at 6 o'clock. Councilmember Harvey, it's nice to see you in person.
Madam and Mr. Attorney.
And Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rossa.
Just want to thank everybody for the discussion tonight, especially to Mr. Smith, our chief of police. I know when I first reached out to somebody in law enforcement that I know, I said, hey, could you provide commentary on this video that people are commenting about? The question I got back from him immediately was, what's your, what's your goal here? What's your agenda? You want to hang these guys, or do you want to help them? And I basically was like, look, I don't, I don't have an agenda, other than to know how to respond to members of the community. I don't have a personal agenda. I think it's just important that we take notice of the things that the community, take notice of the things that are important to the community, take notice of the things that people are getting fired up about, that people are writing fiery articles about, that people are, that where division is being caused in our community, whatever that may be. I think it's important that we have at least a listening ear, and that we're able to seek to make things better. So that's really my, my closing remark. That's where my goal is, that's my goal here, as it relates to public safety. And I really do appreciate the presentation, we got a lot of good information, and I think we had a good dialogue. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bernie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a few notes here. Chief, thank you very much for that presentation. I didn't realize it was going to turn into interrogation, but I do appreciate the presentation, I think it was well thought out and well done. I'm pretty direct, as those of you that, that know me, know that I am. There's an SOP out there for each and every one of you to read, just like the code is out there for each and every one of you to read. One advantage the city has also is, we have the, the advantage of having a mayor for the last six years, and a current mayor, that 100% supports the police department, and they've gone through the policies and procedures of the police department, consider it like a living document. You know, what I'm hearing tonight kind of concerns me, that we're trying to do a renovation by starting with a foundation, and I just don't think that's the, I don't think that's the right approach. And another thing that kind of concerned me is, you know, an exoteric oversight committee, and, guys, we are the oversight committee. The changes begin and end with us, so, and also keep in mind, somebody said something about budget, keep in mind, the attorney gets paid by the hour. So I just think, and I'm looking forward to a spirited debate when it comes to budget time, and, and I hope everybody can bring their best ideas to the table, so we can have an open discussion about it, but, yeah, I just, I didn't really like the way this conversation went. I think if we're looking for minor changes, let's review those minor changes, but I just don't see the need for, what I'm hearing is an overhaul. So thank you for everybody's time. Chief, thanks again for the presentation, I thought it was outstanding. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, and again, Chief, I want to thank you for your time, and Attorney, I want to thank those who had the courage to speak, and yes, I, I do believe that there is some room for improvement. No, I don't really think that we have a huge problem that we need to totally overhaul, but I think that there should be a constant momentum, if you will, for improvement. Everybody can improve at all times, and maybe there is times where, you know, like, has been pointed out, maybe additional training is, is needed, maybe we need to do some minor review and add some, maybe like my suggestion, a quality assurance program or something like that. So, you know, I think that we've got a good city, I think we've got a good communication, starting here with, at least within the council, and hopefully, we can expand that to have the community recognize the, the efforts that our police department make to, to actually promote the public safety. So thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks, Chief, and to the attorneys for being here and being receptive of questions and the discussion. I think that only open the doors for the public to understand that we are concerned about public safety and want their involvement, so thank you for that, Chief.
Councilmember Vlach.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also would like to thank Chief Smith for the presentation and the discussion. It was very informative, and it answered a lot of my questions, and I've been on the council a little over a year, and this incident was the first that I can think of that was brought to the council's attention, and I hope that, I'm sure there was an investigation, and I don't know if those results are shared after, after it's completed, I don't know, I think maybe that would be a good thing, because it would be nice to know if the officers involved, were they following the F P? Did they kind of slip over their bounds? You know, I don't know that, and maybe I missed something being on the phone, but that would be nice to know, too. But otherwise, thank you, and thank you for the city attorneys, that was, that was good information, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harvey, you've got cleanup.
No comments. Thank you.
It is my turn. So, Chief, I truly appreciate everything that you do and the way that you run your department, because you and I've had some very lengthy, in-depth discussion, you have taught me a lot, because I'm not a police officer. But I have all the confidence in the world that you run a top-notch department, and that our officers are properly trained and equipped, because I have had one-on-ones with each officer, and one of my questions was, do you think that you are properly equipped? Ever answer was yes. They wanted this big, I forgot what you call it, something, some kind of combat vehicle to drive down through the middle of town, but, anyway, that was totally out of the In my opinion, being a police officer is an ongoing learning experience every day, because every day is different, and no matter what, even in our own personal lives, every day is different. We always say, if you've learned something today, it's been a good day. So I have utmost respect for all of them, and I will defend them to the bitter end. So I respect your comments on the council, and I think we are all in pretty much an agreement that we do have a very, very good, top-notch police department, because Wasilla, one reason Wasilla grows is because we have a police department, because people feel safe here. So that is one of the reasons that they come here, not only for sure and water, but our police department. So with that, we will see you Monday night. We're adjourned at 8:31.